Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the September 6th version of the Allen County Commissioners's Regular Meeting. I'd like to call it to order Commissioner Rivera.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gosar is here, Commissioner Ritschard not yet here. If you join and or stand and join me, I appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I agree. Public hearing, we have the Allen County Natural Resource Management Plan. David, would you just introduce the topic a little bit for those that are fresh people?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Natural Resource Management Plan has been developed in the last year or so. We hired a consultant, Y2 Consulting, to help us with that plan. The plan is to address how counties communicate with federal agencies on natural resource topics. So, yeah, the plan kind of includes a number of different topics. We have to do natural resources and some objectives in each of those chapters of how we can better communicate and work together as county officials.
Thank you, David. I appreciate it. Is there anybody in the room that'd like to make a comment about the Allen County Natural Resource Management Plan? How about online? I see a few of our select committee members. Anybody? Last time in person and online. If you're online, you can just mute yourself or raise your hand or however you'd like to. This is identity motion to close the public hearing for the Natural Resource Management Plan.
I move that we close the public hearing towards natural resources.
It moves in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing no all the favors, say hi, please.
Hi.
That motion carries. I'd like to open up the public hearing for the Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act 2000 Title III County Projects. Anybody in the room like to speak on or get? The Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act of 2000 Title III County Projects. And how about online?
Commissioners, this is Chad.
Okay, go ahead, police. Good morning. Thank you.
Yes, sorry I couldn't join you in person today, but I just wanted to briefly say that these monies will likely be used for some fire equipment that we need to secure in the next year. We had anticipated using some of this as a match for a grant that we're going to be unable to, which we'll discuss a little bit later in the meeting, but likely we'll be using that for some fire equipment this year.
Thank you, Chad. Mr. Chad, any questions for Chad? All right, last chance to in line on my door in person, comments about Secure Rural Schools Community Self-Determination Act 2000 Title III County Projects. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing, please.
I move that we close the public hearing for Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act of 2000.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing no all the favors, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, all the pros and cons. That motion carries. I'm for comments from the public. It's super exciting. We have a new person here today. Our HR director starts, and so gentlemen, do you introduce and then we'll hear a little bit?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Anissa McDonald. She comes from the university. And today is your very first day. Get on later. Tell them what you've got yourself.
Thank you, Chad.
Thanks, Hannah. I'm very excited to join the county. I worked at UW for the last 18 years in various roles, but most recently are faculty and very specialist at the university. So onboarding faculty, HR kind of aspects of faculty. So I'm super excited to join the county and I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
This is so great to have you. Thanks, sir, for joining us. Any other comments from the public? Should I entertain a motion to close the public comment?
I move we close the public comment.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing no all the favors, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, all the pros and cons. That motion carries. Five disclosures, Commissioner Rivera. Commissioner Ritschard?
I have none.
I have none also. Six considerations of changes on the agenda. Billy, good morning.
Good morning. I have an addition to get on it, hopefully on it.
Okay.
We had an agreement with Holland Securities that came up suddenly for different circumstances that I need to get or like to get signed today, so Sheriff Alphabas can move forward with this project.
Okay.
We had contractor issues, which is.
You guys need to speak on it.
I mean.
Because I don't want to keep you waiting here all day, but.
I mean, do you want to?
Sure. No, the work that we needed to get done by Holland Securities' deadline wasn't able to get done by the contractor. So it's just an extension on the.
Yeah, and it's a whole new agreement technically because of the way the deadline fell. They just put through an extension in that short period of time, but they're willing to work. But that's because we're not feeling any contractor issues.
Okay. Can we put that at the end of the meeting or?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, I'll be in and out.
Okay, can I put it at 30 A? Yeah. Thank you. Okay, David, good morning.
Good morning. Jane calls this morning and would like to remove number eight, the request for proposals for the Allen Courthouse for their project until the next.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Not ready for the prime time. Anybody else? All right, thank you so much. Item seven, approval of the consent agenda. I entertain a motion, Commissioners.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing no all the favors, say hi, please.
Hi.
All right, I all the pros and cons. That motion carries. Now to the regular agenda. Item eight is gone, so we'll move to item nine. Requested approval to provide food shots to employees and their immediate family members with employee benefit verified by Allen County Public Health. Kim?
Good morning.
Good morning. You know how exciting food shots are for me, but.
Exciting stuff.
They are.
We just wanted to get this on the agenda because Food Clinic for Public Health is coming up October 6th at the Lincoln Center. We confirmed it. It'll be all day from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then we are trying, now that we have an additional nurse, we're going to try to do Food Fridays as well for any. And this is just to encourage our employees and their immediate family to come in and get vaccinated.
Yeah. And so you said the employee. There is October 6th, is that what you?
So that's our public health food clinic. And if they can come in anytime, and we usually just keep track of who comes in and invoice the county.
Okay. And do we have a date for the benefit there?
We do. What do you do? It's in November, and I apologize, it's November 15th, I believe. And I'm sure we can be there too following the election.
Super. Okay. Thank you for that.
We'll be there.
Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for item nine, please.
I move that we provide a time.
Second. Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing no all the favors, say hi, please.
Hi.
All right, I all the pros and cons. That motion carries. Thank you, Kim. Thanks for doing that. Thanks for your staff.
Yeah, no problem.
Appreciate it. And everybody, flu season. 10 o'clock, 10, present for approval allocating Title III funds in the amount of $14,528.10 Chad did just Allen County Fire Warden to carry activities under the Firewise Communities Program to provide to homeowners and fire-sensitive equal assistance education on and assistance with implementing techniques in home siding, home constructions, and home landscaping that can increase the protection of people and property from wildfires. And $14,528.10 to err in Appleman Sheriff to reimburse the participating county for search and rescue and other emergency services, including firebiding that is performed on federal land after the date on which the use was approved under subsection B of the Bay Four by the participating county. Anybody else? Any questions for, I see Chad's online and Aaron's here. Any question about that? I entertain a motion for 10, please.
I move that we approve item 10 as presented.
You weren't going to read all that?
I'm a good reader, if I can.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing no all the favors, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I all the pros and cons. That motion carries. Thank you. Item 11. Present for the consideration, Allen County Natural Resource Management Plan, David.
Mr. Chairman, so, yeah, just to add to what I've said. You know, we did have some public comments period, just a couple of meetings, things that we considered public comments. Many of those things were incorporated in the plan. Those are currently also shown in the plan. We've shown all the comments and tried to address them, whether they ended up here in the plan or just as comments. And obviously, it's been quite the process and it's had some opinions and thoughts and they were taken into consideration by those who worked on the plan and incorporated those. And so we put it up for the 30 days of the comment period again. My office has not received any additional comments, so if there's anything you'd like to change, we can do that.
Thank you, David. Commissioners.
Yeah, I don't want to slow down the process. I think it's a good document. It's a working document. We'll constantly be editing it as things change and years go and all. So I'd like to sometimes see something once it's been settled in the courts as far as the court process. Something in there that'll remind us down the line if that has been settled. But I don't want to be the reason that this is. Yeah, I believe it's ready to pass.
Thank you. Commissioners.
I agree. Okay. I don't think it's perfect, perfect, but we're getting to a point to diminishing the burden, yes. And mostly, I mean, it will accomplish where it's intended to do, and that is sort of preserve the purpose and space of local government in federal land decisions and in that conversation. So I don't think we have to describe every eventuality. We just have to make sure that the basic approach is described in such a way that that conversation can happen and local governments excluded from it, and it will do that, so.
Thank you. Mike, I see Mike Massey, Bonnie Bath, Maura, online. Would you like to have any comment? I really do appreciate you guys' work and the time and expertise you put into it. You made the documents so much better and so much more like Allen County, and I am so appreciative. So please, the floor is yours. We'll go Mike and then how about Maura if you're interested, and then Bonnie, do you want to help us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No additional comments. I think it's had a great deal of time, as David pointed out, for public review. And I think this document provides a great foundation for lots of constructive conversations and discussion between the county and those federal agencies that manage federal natural resources. One example I would point out is a provision in the climate change section, which on the draft that I have, which I'm not sure is the same draft that you have, is maybe an old one, is on page 24. But it talks about forming a task force or a group about discussing the impacts of climate change on the natural resources in the county. And in reality, that's probably the biggest threat right now to our natural resources in the long run. And this is a good opportunity to use the expertise that's developing at the University of Wyoming to perhaps tap into a wonderful resource, the nation's, one of the nation's most powerful computers in the National Center for Atmospheric Research in Cheyenne. And to have a dialogue between the federal government and the county about what those impacts are likely to be in the coming years and what we can do about it. And I think that's just one example of the various proactive measures that this plan provides for the county to take. So other than that, Mr. Chairman, thanks to all three of the county commissioners for their work on this and for their consideration.
Thanks, Mike. Really do appreciate your work on it. And Maura, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you all today?
Well, thank you.
I don't really have anything to add. I know you have a long meeting and this has been a long process, but I've learned a lot about the county. I've really appreciated getting to know the other steering committee members. I've really appreciated getting to hear from David about what his needs are in the planning department. And it's not a perfect endpoint. It is a document that can be changed over time as priorities change and as our needs change. But I think it's, you know, I think it's good to go and I appreciate your support. Thanks.
Thanks, Maura. Thank you for all your work. Bonnie, anything to add? You don't have to if you don't want to. Well, I just have to tell you guys, thank you so much for the work. I remember the document, but it was presented to us and where we have come now and largely the changes that have been made because of your work. Thank you for that. I really do like you guys. It would be great if you had some input on making a process like this better, not only from your perspective, but from public comment. If you had that, just a quick bullet point email to me or David would be really helpful as you reflect on how this went and how we can do it better next time. But in the end, thank you. Good document. So excited that this is where we're at from where we started, long distance travel. Thank you so much. I appreciate it, guys.
I just want to echo those thanks. We did a really good job. This is a much different document than what we first saw. Very specific to Allen County. So well done. Thank you for all the time and long hours you worked on this piece.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. So item 11, I entertain a motion for 11. I move that we approve the Allen County Natural Resource Management Plan.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion?
This is the easiest part.
Yeah, David, gentlemen, whoever else worked on it, thank you to your staff for doing the work while you were in busy season. So thank you. Don't want to miss that part of it. We move in second. No further discussion. All those in favor signify the saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I all the pros and cons. That motion carries. Thank you so much. Item 12, present for consideration renewal of the 2022 mobile home park licenses for team, mobile home park, county, mobile home park.
I will fight.
Help me, Joe. Team is right. Just right. Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ritschard.
All right, so, yeah, they got their application into us. He stayed. Inspection is fine. And so here we are to approve it.
Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for 12 then, if there are no questions.
I think that we provided 12 as presented.
Second. Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing no all the favors, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I all the pros and cons. Carries. Item 13, present for consideration amended plat for lots 13 and 14, block 17, Sherman Hill Estates. David, good morning again.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Timmy and Kimberly Taylor and William and Janet Wolf have requested a boundary line adjustment for lots 13 and 14. Block 17 of Sherman Hills Estates, where the boundary line adjustment occurs within a plotted subdivision, amended plat must be approved as well. If they're outside of an amended plat, you guys can't even see this. So the boundary line adjustment is an exemption from subdivision regulations, which allows them to do this without going through a full subdivision process. But again, it requires a platted, a plaque that has all the right stuff, you know, phrases, the notes and things that are required. So we review that and bring it to you for your response.
Commissioners, any questions?
And the lot adjustment is to get around, log around that building there?
Correct.
It's because somebody, it's because they didn't pay attention to where the lot lines were. They thought where the lot lines were, which isn't where they were. So they, it's easier to fix it than move the building.
Yep.
Poor guys. Top of the ice, the wolves. So that's been like that for about 40 years. Really, 50. A long, long time. Like since those places were built in the early 70s, probably. Somebody just didn't go find the dent. It's only Centennial.
The survey was around in the 70s. I'm certain of it. So, well.
Chairman, I move that we approve item 18 as presented.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing no all the favors, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I all the pros and cons. That motion carries. Item 14, present for consideration request for reclosure of the Allen County Annex on September 14, 15, and the morning of the 16th to allow the planning department to attend the GeoPass conference. David, please.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you know, the GeoPass conference will be held here in Laramie this year, which you guys have so willingly become sponsors of. September 14 through 16, so it's a Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Basically, our office won't be closed the entire days, those days. So one of my staff, so three of us will be going to the conference, or would like to go to the conference. One of us, one of my staff will be out. For a procedure, and then the other staff will, should be in the office from like 8 to 11, 8 to 12 those days. But if anything came out, we just wanted to let you guys know for one thing that this is what we would like to do and then kind of get your approval to let you know that you may not be in regular hours. And then we'll make sure we get everything posted and everything, so everybody can. The office itself will still be open because of the public defender upstairs. So we just kind of put chairs and things around, let it know that our office is closed or whatever. But if you would go ahead and approve this, then we'll all be able to, or the three of us that are set up.
Commissioners, any questions for David? I entertain a motion for 12, please.
I move that we grant the request for closure of the Allen County Annex on September 14, 15, and the morning of 16.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing no all the favors, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, I all the pros and cons. Thank you, David. Enjoy the conference. 15, present for approval memorandum of understanding to the Wyoming Office of Guardian Ad Light of the Allen County Wyoming, purposes of providing legal representation of all cases, child protection cases, children in need of supervision cases, to legacy actions, interstate contracts on cubicles, cases determination of parental rights cases, and appeals rising out of these cases from the date of execution due till June 30, 2024. Jennifer. Good morning.
Good morning. So this is from the AG's office, and it is for the Guardian Ad Light program. There is not a budgetary line item for this, or the Guardian Ad Light program has an office in the Annex Building where David is. And so there is not another budgetary item for that AG's office. Just wants the contract in place for those cases that they, that the Guardian Ad Light does here. Here in the county.
Commissioners, any questions? Is the Guardian Ad Light, it's a state contract position, so.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct. It's provided by the state for the four criminal cases.
And is it, is it contract or is it a, it's one of the state, you know, they just got it.
I, so it, I think it has been both in the past. There, it's always a state, it is a state contract. And they have had a full-time state employee. I don't know what Tamara's status is, whether she's a full-time employee or she's a contracted employee. I believe she's a full-time state employee, but I'm not certain.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, gentlemen. I entertain a motion for 15, please.
I move that we approve item 15 as presented.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing no all the favors, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, I all the pros and cons.
The way we would know is if she receives county benefits or state. I think that's the state.
She's, it is a state employee because it's provided by the state and we don't have those contracts.
Yeah.
And we don't do any of that hiring.
So the O U just describes what we do versus what they do, meaning we provide an office, a physical location.
Yeah, and they provide the personnel.
Awesome. Item 16, present for approval contract between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Allen, Wyoming, by and through the Allen County Prosecuting Attorney's Office Cathedral Home for Children for Adult Divergent Program Services for the purpose of providing pre-child diversion services to individuals aged 17 to 25 years old in lieu of criminal prosecution by the county attorney, now the County Circuit Court, for July 1st, 2022 through 2/30, 2023, and about $60,000.
This is a renewal of the contract that we have had with Cathedral Home to provide these services previously. The one change for this year is the age, the lower age range, we change from 18 to 17 to give our office some discretion if we have a 17, almost 18-year-old who is having issues to put them into this adult diversion program rather than running through them through the GPO program if they've already, generally in cases where they've already had experience in the GPO programs.
Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for 16 then.
I move that we approve item 16 as presented.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing no all the favors, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, all the pros and cons. That motion carries.
I started reading the next item.
Present for approval amendment number one to agreement dated September 12, 2021, entry, Tomatry, American Medical Corp. in Allen County, Wyoming, to modify the number one, first project, first project products, product parameters and payment terms set forth. In a section A of the agreement, shall be modified as a fourth, section A of this amendment. Two, appendix one, footogramming product specification shall be added to the agreement. And three, the sector map attached to this amendment shall be added to the agreement. Chelsea, tell me what that all means.
There's a lot of words, but it's really quite simple. So the state of Wyoming did contract to fly the areas that they flew in the past. So that's the city of Laramie, Centennial, and Rock River. And so because we don't have to pay for that part, we got a credit to go towards our flight. And so we've opted to fly Highway 230, Highway 130, and up into the mountains where the fire was at a better resolution.
All right. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah.
I entertain a motion for 17, please.
I move that we approve item 17 as presented.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing no all the favors, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I all the pros and cons. That motion carries. Thank you, Chelsea. I appreciate it. Item 18, present for approval approach license for Michael at Ruthport, that is County Road 55, Welsh Lane, located in the southeast quarter of section 25, township 60, North Ram City Port West, with a minimum of 18 inches over required. Rob, good morning.
Good morning. Recently, the fourth, as you recall, divided their properties into two lots. So they're just asking permission to access their lot.
Commissioners, any?
I've looked at it. Everything's fine as far as.
Commissioner Jacob? I entertain a motion for 18, please.
I move that we approve item 18 as presented.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing no all the favors, say hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I all the pros and cons. That motion carries. Thank you, Rob. Present for approval. Highway safety program fiscal year, federal fiscal year 2023, subaward agreement between the Wyoming Department of Transportation, highway safety program, and Allen County Sheriff's Office for impaired driving, high visibility enforcement. Sheriff Alman, good morning.
Good morning. This is our agreement for the 2023 fiscal year with NISA and WADA for high visibility enforcement, which for impaired driving enforcement. So a grant that's been awarded to us by the state.
Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for 19.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Here you can see that all is a favor, say goodbye by saying hi.
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 Hi, I also suppose that's I. That motion carries. Item twenty-eight, present for the approval highway safety program, federal fiscal year twenty twenty-three, subaward agreement between the Wyoming Department of Transportation, highway safety program and Alamo County Sheriff's Office. For occup, occupancy, safety, high visibility enforcement, Sheriff Alman.
This is the second grant that was awarded to us through YDOT NISA for high visibility enforcement for uh occup, safety, which is seatbelt enforcement.
Erin, how do you do that, do you just pull somebody over if you suspect they're not using seatbelts?
No, so a seatbelt violation is what we call a secondary violation, a primary violation, which you can't necessarily pull somebody over for seatbelt violation. Uh but what we, what it does is that uh grant provides funding to officers out there for high visibility enforcement of all of our laws. Um with an emphasis on seatbelts, and so if we find uh another traffic violation, and then they're also not wearing a seatbelt. Then we enforce the seatbelt violation person for those, child restraints also fall in there as well, so. Um so most of the time, most of our uh our deputies are out there um finding other violations, but they'll give usually a verbal warning for, for the violation if it's speed equipment. But then make the seatbelt tickets, we're trying to educate and enforce the importance of seatbelts uh within uh. Within highway traffic safety within the county as well, we have all kinds of statistics that shows that um. Wearing your seatbelt dramatically decreases the likeliness of fatality in a crash, which we have a lot of fatalities, not only around the state, but also on our uh county roads and highways within all counties.
I just got this really great picture in my head, like. Five-year-old triplet little boys having a squirt gun fighting in that truck, you know. While their dad's driving them down the road.
Usually you don't have to.
You don't see that very often.
Usually you don't have to worry about that too, which is what we do, we'll get people that, especially on our, on I A, you know, that's a higher, higher speed freeway there where. They're speeding excessively ninety-five miles an hour, not wearing a seatbelt, you know, if there was to be a crash, whether that's single vehicle rollover. Have a distracted drive, you know, have a forbidden crash to somebody else, um the likeliness of. Fatality is through proof, not only for the driver that doesn't see, but any other occupants. So, so it's important education and enforcement work that we do, because it's one of those things that we can directly relate to seeing lives.
Any questions for Sheriff Alman?
Yeah, just, uh just for information, um Erin, when you stop somebody and they don't have a properly straightforward, you know, like a, a young child. This was the case for my daughter, she was uh, you know, she was older, she was ten, but she had to be in a certain kind of uh added seat. Just because she was small, so.
So the, between NISA, NISA recommendations, uh and then our own. State laws, they've changed to where it's not so much new black and white, kind of when your daughter was a little bit younger, um it's definitely based on height, weight, age. So, um and any combination of those, so it's not the hard and fast rule that you had to be twelve before you were at a booster seat, or you had to be. Four foot eight to be out of a booster seat, or you had to be, I believe, is eighty-eight pounds, I think is what it was, to be out of a booster seat. Now, if you're eighty-eight pounds, you could be out of a booster seat, if you're four foot eight but happen to not be twelve or eighty-eight pounds, you could be out of booster seats, so.
If my kids were out of booster seats before anyone else.
At seventeen, they finally got to sell them.
I, I also have tall, tall, skinny children, and so they were out of booster seat a little bit earlier. Uh so no, a lot of those times, like I said, if we see that they're restrained but not properly restrained, that's an education that we do, so. It's when they're completely unrestrained, where we take that enforcement action.
I entertain a motion for item twenty, please. I move that we approve item twenty as presented.
Second.
Further discussion? Here you can see that all is a favor, say goodbye by saying hi.
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 Hi, I also suppose that's I. Here is, uh. Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate it. Item twenty-one, present for approval cooperative agreement for the subaward of the twenty twenty-two Western States Wildland Urban Interface Grant between the state of Wyoming, Office of State Lands and Investments. Forestry Division in Alamo County grants um number twenty-two dash DG dash one one zero two one six hundred dash zero two one C F T A. Number ten point six six, or an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, Chad, good morning.
Commissioners, once again, um this is a situation where I'm gonna probably have to ask for some help on this. Um this, this uh community wildland, um county-wide wildland protection plan is something that we update periodically. Uh the last one that was done was done in two thousand and eleven, then updated in two thousand and twelve, I believe. And so it's, it's somewhat, it's outdated, you know, based on a lot of the fire activity we've had on the landscape in the last couple of years. Um we uh applied for this grant basically through state forestry. Um it hasn't been brought to your attention up to this point because uh I was incorrectly under the misunderstanding that we could use the Title III funds. Um to match this grant, and I've been kind of um saving that money just for such an occasion when we received this grant. We recently found out that I was incorrect in that assumption, and our Title III funds are not eligible for the match on this grant. So at this point, um Bailey can help us out with fleshing out a little bit of the numbers on this, um we're gonna have quite a bit of um. In-kind match on this to match some of it, but we'll be asking for some money. We won't be able to probably get an RFP and a contractor in place until next spring on this, so it's a potential that we could look for this money in the next um. Uh budget set, in the next budget year, but um Bailey can give you a little bit more information about the details on the numbers, I don't have that grant in front of me right now, but it's uh twenty-five thousand dollars. That we're asking to assure that we would be able to match this grant. This grant's important to us because it, in having that, that plan in place, it enables us to apply for other grants for mitigation and things along those lines. On private lands in, in the, in the county.
Thank you, Chad, Bailey, thank you.
Yes, so um when the grant was applied for, there was fifteen thousand in-kind of fifteen thousand cash match that we needed to come up with. Like Chad said, he was hoping to use his Title III funds, uh because we have used Title III funds before to help match some other uh forestry grants. Uh looking into it a little further, we found out we can't use those funds. Um what Chad is asking for is up to thirty, which we don't think we need the thirty, just in case in-kind match doesn't come through. Um but the plan is, or the hope is to add it to my grant match budget uh come next um budget cycle. Because he doesn't need the funds now, like he said, he's going to be doing RFP prior later spring, and of course invoice won't start till summer, so we don't need those funds right away. Um one of the things I wanted you to be aware of is currently in my grant match, we have the FEMA match, uh twelve thousand five hundred. Uh that's the last time for it this year, um so it'll be, you know, twelve thousand five hundred less than to add this, so not as much as a hit, I guess. Um but yeah, with the, not being able to use those Title III funds, unfortunate, but they are federal funds, so it is something we looked at too further, and I thought we did, so we don't get to a little that pickle, so.
Thank you, David, any questions, Commissioners? Chad, I just have a quick question, who does this type of work, uh the logging companies or resource management companies?
Um I, I guess uh the short answer there would probably be a resource management company, there's, there's private contractors, there's a couple in the state that do this type of work. It's, it's very extensive, and it involves um surveying all the various sites where there's uh wildland urban interface in the county. So um they have a lot of time and effort in, in going around the county, looking at the individual communities and, and cabin sites and things along those lines. And issuing recommendations for mitigation in those areas, and then having a plan in the eventuality of, of a wildland event in that area. So it is, it's a big, it's a big deal, it's beyond the scope of my office to be able to do it in-house, so it is something we'd contract out to have them do. The last plan we did was uh, you know, through, a stack of three-ring binders, uh four or five deep, so it's, it's a big deal.
Thank you, Chad, Commissioners, any? I entertain a motion for item twenty-one, then.
I guess I had one question, sorry, is where, you know, if we're gonna authorize matching funds. Probably we want to designate places that come from. And that's sort of a question for three of you, Jackie, Kayla, Bailey. Can, can general purpose fifty, can one percent be used for that, or is that not appropriate, should it come out of what mislaid is that committed?
Well, I mean, what we're planning on doing is, I mean, the map for this fiscal year, we don't need match, um it's a multi-year grant. So what my uh thought was, was to include it in my request, in my matching funds from budget cycle, and then that comes from your general fund. Yeah, yeah, something out there, so then it's, it's just within that budget piece that I do.
So I picked up on that in the discussion, I guess the question is, is it, you know, here we are, that's nine months' play, right? Is this, is that how long this is gonna be? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, by the time, by the time we get the fully executed agreement back, I mean, for the state, that takes time, uh. Chad's also busy out on fires and other things, so like he said, he thought he was planning on getting RFP out till this spring. By the time we're under contract, it won't be till summer.
Do we, do we expect proposals from companies that do it all over?
That would be a question for Chad.
I mean, is this like a local thing, or is it somebody who sort of, it's almost like a, a private forestry consultant or something?
Yeah, yeah, he brought this to Chad. So yeah, there are, um I, I actually reached out to some uh private contractor that's here, that's in Wyoming, um that, that works in wildland fire, um that I'm familiar with. Um state forestry is also familiar with uh some other, I mean, every county does this, so there's a, there's a variety of contractors that have been involved in this. Um so I don't, I, I, you know, until we do the RFP and see who shows interest in, in, in helping us with this, we're not really sure where it'll come from, but. There's a, there's a reasonable chance it'll be an in-state uh environmental consulting type of organization.
And to go with your question, if this does take not as long as what Chad's thinking, we do start the project, you know, May. There is some funding that I might anticipate a grant match that I could use for, you know, the first couple of weekends, so.
Any other questions, Commissioners? I entertain a motion for twenty-one, then, please.
I think that we approve item twenty-one.
Second.
Move it second, any further discussion?
It seems oddly bureaucratic, I think if I had a cabin or, you know, because there's a lot of private land, snow range, more than other forests in Wyoming. You know, some places, it's like all federal and put a few little branch pieces in, but there's a lot of state and private land up there. I can't imagine as a private landowner waiting for consultant to come, you know, on your own land. And uh just like it's your yard, so I probably wouldn't wait, I would just go out there with my saw and start cutting. Stack myself a big pile of firewood, or sell it to somebody who does firewood, I don't really understand what. I mean, I guess where a person's private land meets the federal or state that's next to it, or their neighbor, maybe there's a different discussion. You can't, can't do that outside your land. Bother me to defend my property without consultant. It's pretty easy to look at trees and tell which ones are not healthy or whatever, I don't know.
Any other discussions? All of the favors in five, I say hi.
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 I also suppose that's I. Here is, thank you so much, Chad, I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate your help with this.
Thank you, Bailey, on that, we'll be seeing you here at distance up again, so. Item twenty-two, present for approval memorandum of understanding, Q the Board of Commissioners of Alamo County, Wyoming and the Alamo County Sheriff's Office. For alcohol enforcement in Alamo County from July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirty, twenty twenty-three, and amount not to exceed seventy thousand five hundred, Bailey.
Uh this agreement, um it's finally been brought to you, I'm sure a couple of times. Um usually with prevention, we've contracted with the Laramie Police Department. Uh with different circumstances, we decided to partner with the Sheriff's Office instead. Um there are five different categories that we do need law enforcement assistance on based off of our work plan that we've submitted to the state. Um this agreement with the Sheriff's Office, or is it only with the Sheriff's Office, only for one year? The grant is a two-year grant, however, with the uncertainty of the election, we decided just to hold it for one year. Um the items that are included with this are underage drinking, um the adult overconsumption, which is like tips training, um that's required by the city anyways. Um and then adult overconsumption, high visibility, and then tobacco compliance checks. Um each of them are divided up into different rounds of funding, um and we discussed all this with Sheriff Alman and the Congress to. Uh comply with the grant and um help, help to spend some of the money too.
He's good with allocation, yes.
Commissioners, any other questions? I entertain a motion for item twenty-two, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-two as presented.
Move it second, any further discussion? Sheriff, if you'd join us, any, any further, could you like to add to that one?
Well, that just will move forward with the grant, with the dispersion of the allocations that are given to us, and so. And the plans to take over this grant won't be um solely done through the Sheriff's Office, we're gonna. And get the help of uh the other law enforcement agencies that we have within the county to, to help us with uh. Compliance checks, tips, training, and enforcement of this grant.
Thank you, Sheriff, I appreciate it. The move is second, all those favors, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I also suppose that's I. That motion carries, thank you so much. Item twenty-three, present for approval application to the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, high-risk rural road funding amount of twenty-two thousand six hundred, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. For Soldier Springs delineator addition project, and direct the chairperson to sign the application, resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one seven, additional supporting digit with strike twenty.
Yeah, this is a, a grant through YDOT for high-risk rural roads. We're asking to get assistance in putting in delineator posts on Soldier Springs Road. In two thousand and seven, there was approximately six hundred, all right, four hundred and sixty A D T, which had average daily traffic. I just did it uh a couple of weeks ago and had, because of all the construction, everything's gone on out in that direction. Two thousand and twenty-two, we have one thousand fifty A D T or average daily traffic, so increased approximately six hundred vehicles per day. And uh, you know, in, in the winter, we get a lot of crosswinds and stuff. A lot of uh, it makes it a little harder stuff to see, but just know it won't cross that road. And even, yeah, when it's night time, so anyway, we wanted to use our, that grant for that project. It's got a nine and a half percent match, it's a, it's a somewhere number, but uh nine and a half, so roughly two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. I don't believe we, Bailey and I talked about, I don't believe we can use the CRF because it's a federal.
We don't.
We can't use that.
We don't know exactly where the, that money streams down from, so instead of risking it on twenty-five hundred dollars, what's I to spend?
Yeah.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, what is that, delineator?
It's the, on the side of the roads, it's the little uh.
Green.
Yeah, green, that's, and, and this one here, because they're actually. In this grant, we're actually wanting to get the, the updated ones basically flop over, so. And we're asking to get the delineators plus have it installeds.
Yeah, those are like little plastic pipe reflective stuff on it, that can. So then if you slide off, you don't damage your vehicle, and you don't damage the thing, it just pops right back up.
Well, somebody who runs and bikes that, who, I can test how much more traffic is.
Oh, yeah. I wish it was a wider.
What's the striping on that? What's the striping like on that right now?
We just striped it. A week and a half.
Cool, because I drove down it a little bit longer ago than that.
Yeah, it was, it started to, yeah.
A nice work on Blue Bird, too.
Yeah, that is same, same part of that. We do have some questions on Blue Bird.
Oh, I'm sure.
Later.
All right, so, oh, thank you, Rob, sounds like a great idea. And I entertain emotion for twenty three, please.
Second.
Moving second, any further discussion? Hearing singing that all the favors in five are saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi. I'll propose inside. That motion carries, item twenty four, present for approval contract between Wyoming Department of Family Services and Alvin County Commissioners for the temporary assistance for needy families. And CFDA numbers ninety-three, that point five five eight grant, which is about a hundred and ten thousand fifty dollars for the services provided for my overall life twenty twenty two, December thirty, twenty twenty three, Bailey, tomorrow.
Morning, let's see, this is our CHCPI agreement. With this funding, we allocate funds to Big Brothers Big Sisters, Cathedral Home, Interface, and. Hi, thank you. I was very happy to find out we received almost full pun, full funding. We were just a couple hundred dollars short, as opposed to normally, we, the past, we've been receiving about eighty-six thousand dollars. So this was a very nice surprise. But this is the agreement from the state, your next meeting, I'll have the suburbs of the agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Zedel, any questions? I entertain emotion for twenty four then, please.
I move that we provide twenty four as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing that all the favors in five are saying that.
Hi.
Hi. I'll propose inside. Motion carries, item twenty five, present for approval, short-term ninety-eight contract for individual treatment services for our Gaslighting and Supervise Treatment Program, IJTP, and ACYEP. For three participants for services provided from August first, twenty twenty two, through October thirty, first, twenty twenty two, at a monthly rate of two thousand dollars per month. Heather, good morning, for yours.
And commissioners, I just wanted to remind you, that's one of the printed contracts I handed you this morning.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. I am putting in front of you a request for approval of this short-term contract. It's with our juvenile treatment providers. The contract actually ended in June. All of the other contracts were two years, this one, for whatever reason, was a one year. So this will get us through the ninety-day period while the next items are for RFPs to put back out for our juvenile treatment providers. So this would just be to cover us in the meantime.
Thank you, Heather, Mr. Zedel, any questions?
Yeah, Heather, is there any assurance that the current counselor will be the one who continues working with the juveniles?
Yes, with this ninety-day, he will continue working with our juvenile.
I know there was some concern about that continuity and all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, prisoners? I entertain emotion for twenty five then, please.
I move that we provide item twenty five.
Second, moving second, any further discussion? I was saying hi, please.
Hi.
All right, I'll propose inside. That motion carries, Heather, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And it looks like we'll be again here on item twenty six, present for approval request for proposal for juvenile treatment providers for the Court Supervised Treatment Program, Alvin County Youth Empowerment Program, YEP, to include individual and group sessions, which may include level twenty-five and level one adolescent substance abuse treatment, and direct the clerk to advertise better. Again, please.
Thank you again, commissioners. This is for, with our change in our programs, for our juvenile programs, with the requirement of our federal funding and grants tied to that, any contract, and Bailey couldn't speak more to this, but any contract over twenty-five thousand dollars required to submit an RFP and secure treatment providers through that RFP process. Given that the federal program for our youth empowerment program and our support and integration program will be funded separately from the state. We're gonna put out multiple RFPs. This one is to cover the empowerment program and would offer those lower-level services. This program is for a lower-risk, lower-need participant to come into the program. And then this would be funded separately from the rest of the programs.
Mr. Zedel, any questions? Twenty six then, please.
I move that we provide twenty six as presented.
Moving second, any further discussion? Hearing singing that all the favors in five are saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi. I'll propose inside. That motion carries, item twenty seven, present for approval request for proposal for juvenile treatment providers for the Court Supervised Treatment Program, Alvin County Integrated Juvenile Treatment Program, IJTP, and the Alvin County Support and Integration Program, SIP, to include individual and group sessions, which may include level one outpatient and two-point-one intensive outpatient, adolescent substance abuse treatment, and direct the clerk to advertise. Heather, good morning, again.
And to build upon, this contract and RFP process would be for our higher-risk, higher-need participants in that IJTP and the support and integration program that would consist of that higher-level treatment.
Mr. Zedel, any questions?
Heather, we would definitely be requiring that they have all federal and state certification in hand at the time of hiring and not be receiving training down the line to fit that requirement, correct?
Yes, there has to have state certification in hand. If somebody is in the process of CARF, and, and we had talked about this with, I had talked about this with Jen and Bailey. We will plan on moving forward with interviews for any applicants, and that would be made clear to them as far as the requirements, yes.
It's also in the contract language. And what Heather was talking about was, I said, had suggested to both she and Bailey that as they get applicants or responses to the RFP, it would probably be a good idea because it requires, these services require such close work with Heather's team to do in-person interviews to make sure they don't just have a written document, but also can interview whoever has applied so they get a better sense of who it is they'd be working with.
Heather, any, any thoughts about how many you might, responses you might receive for these RFPs? I know you can look into the future, but would you have an idea?
Um, you know, I don't have an idea. I am going to, as soon as it gets published, notify all of the treatment providers here in town and a couple of the bigger ones in Cheyenne. So hope to get a significant amount of interest.
Thank you, Heather. Any other questions, prisoners?
Yeah, is there any, Heather, is there any disincentive sort of built in that turns providers off from these types of contracts?
It is a lot of work and it is time commitment. Of course, our goal, so with these programs being separated, the youth empowerment program is up to six kids. And then the other two, IJTP and SIP, would have nine kids up to. So if, and hopefully, we are getting up and running for numbers. So it would be a big time commitment. And then, of course, there is weekly staffings, close communication with the team. And then criminal justice involved youth, I should just say, the criminal justice involved population. As a treatment client, it's a little bit different than a traditional treatment client. So there is some conflict some treatment providers have with that. So just being able to make sure that we're all on the same page on expectations and reporting, those kind of things.
So I suppose in a traditional relationship, the, the treatment provider is accountable to their customer, I guess. And in this case, they're accountable to a team and a, a process that, that makes more work. So could, the disin, the disincentive is that it could sort of take over your practice a little bit. And then the question is whether it pays enough.
Correct.
I would say for all that extra time.
Yeah.
It seems like we, like we sort of cycle through providers and maybe, maybe it's kind of not working yet. We should look at why it doesn't work.
Having, in my private life, commissioners worked as the defense attorney for the juvenile and adult treatment programs, it's a huge time commitment. And it takes a firm who has, the state CARF licensing takes a lot. And it's a lot of backend bookwork. So that always has traditionally been a larger counseling service because they have the people to do that and get that done. It also takes people who are super dedicated to working with kids. Because working with kids requires not only working with the children, but also with their guardians and parents and families, which expands, when you work with adults, you're just dealing with that adult. What's, working with kids is a lot harder. So it's hard to find people who have the education and skills and ability to be able to do it, and then have the ability to have someone in their offices to do all of that, not just provide those services, but run the business end with all the licensure or the state requirements, the federal, the program doesn't have those, but the, the state program does.
Well, but so suppose everyone can do, suppose if a practice can have all those things in place, are they still billing for the therapist-client time and that's it? Or is there, or is there any additional compensation through the program? You know, because if it's that demanding, it, you know, it ought to pay more or else.
So.
They're working for free.
Historically, it has been on a month-to-month basis, and Heather and Bailey can step in here. Historically, it's been a contracted amount on a month-to-month basis. We changed the contract for purposes of this contract to be on a per-participant basis because we've had such fluctuation in the juvenile program. And so, and it is written into the contract, all of those weekly meetings and all of those things, so that the counselors can evaluate, yes, maybe per participant, we know we have a court session a week and a pre-court session a week. And then we likely have, you know, maybe two individual sessions, one or two individual sessions, and then it's a family session. So they can look at their billing and say, okay, for each participant per month, we know we're gonna have this many hours dedicated. This is what we need per participant per month. So that they can come back under this and say, this is what we need per participant.
Got you.
So in the adult world, where they have fairly set numbers, or their numbers are pretty set all of the time, it is on a per-month basis. But until the juvenile world gets to a point where it is always fully at its fullest levels, it's hard for the program to be able to pay that money out when we have providers who maybe don't have as many kids as we anticipated.
And that's been the case, if they had one child and they were making pretty good money. And they actually lived to accept their services.
Yeah.
So if they got loaded up, it could be super challenging.
And actually, on the individual side, I think, yes, from the group treatment side, it's usually better. Because the provider also has the option to bill for participants who have insurance, be it through the state, through Medicaid, Medicaid or CHIP or private insurance, the provider also has the ability to bill the child's insurance provider for their services. So, and most, if not all, of the kids who have been in the juvenile treatment program have insurance coverage, either through the state's Medicaid program or through private insurance. So they do get additional compensation that way as well.
Got you. Won't be interested to interview somebody and figure out why, what they like or don't like about it or what. I mean, what if there were some small adjustments that could be made to the process that could make it more valid?
Yeah, and our RFP, we provide the sample contract in there. And we do tell them that if they have any issues with any of the provisions within the contract, they need to address them at the beginning and suggest changed language. So if they, if they read through the contract and they're like, I can't do this, or I don't have the time to do this, or I can only go to staffing meetings twice a month instead of four times a month, or whatever it needs to be, they have the ability to propose those changes when they submit their response.
Or maybe from a professional perspective, but I don't think that this is the, I don't want to provide treatment as you, because I don't think that's the right way to do it. So I'm not gonna participate in the contract. I don't want to be required to provide something that I don't think is appropriate. So you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
It could be a professional thing, you know?
Because it is hard, because they're working from the nationally-recognized standards for the juvenile treatment drug court programs, which do sometimes conflict with counselors who have not been, or treatment providers who have not been working in that world. It's hard for them to figure out how to get that to mesh. The ones who have done it don't generally have an issue sorting out that part of it in a long time.
Yep.
That's my two cents, sorry.
Anything else? I entertain emotion for twenty seven, thank you.
I move that we provide a twenty seconds, please.
Second.
Moving second, any further discussion? Hearing singing that all the favors in five are saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi. I'll propose inside. That motion carries, thank you, Heather, I really appreciate it.
You bet.
Item twenty eight, present for approval order declaring nuisance for real property owned by Green Developers LLC in New York LLC located on, at tracks thirty-three A and thirty-four A of Phase Three of the Medicine Bow Ranch subdivision.
So this is the tire problem that we have out there on Fetterman Road. And after our last meeting, I forwarded you an email from Kevin at Green Developers. He had sent that email prior to our meeting, but I did not get it until after immediately got hung up in our email filters. So I apologize for that. I, last Monday, I spoke with, or I sent an email to Kevin. The planning department got complaints. You should have an, an order and a notice.
So I got you, I understand.
So last Monday, our planning department got complaints that there had been more deliveries of tires over the weekend on Saturday. So I sent an email at that time to Kevin from Green Developers again and said, just so you know, since our conversation, this is the, I've gotten, we've gotten information that there have been additional little deliveries of tires. If you could please give us an update, we plan to have the nuisance order on today's agenda. And I also spoke with Joel Frost from Wyoming DEQ. He called me last week. He indicated that DEQ was going to also go forward with a notice of violation. We talked about the change from Kevin James, or Victor James, I'm sorry, Victor James owning the property or having interest in the property under the contract for deed. That was rescinded by Green Developers earlier this spring and has been filed in the Land Records Office. So now the property is entirely owned by Green Developers and does not, Mr. James no longer has an interest. So I talked to him about that. He was going to check with everybody on his ends to make sure how, what they needed to do differently, if anything, on his end and let me know. I told him I'd keep him updated as to our process. So what you have in front of you is the order declaring the nuisance and also the notice of the order declaring the nuisance. I did receive just this morning an email from Kevin at Green Developers, which says, which was in response to my email about last Saturday's dumping of tires. And he said, he's aware of the situation and was contacted by the neighbor. Those tires were already moved from Cypress Road. The neighbor knows the steps being taken to rectify everything. All the actions I mentioned, which were an update to the cameras, removal of the tires and progress on the grant, um, are already in motion. The, the whole tire situation is being resolved and will be complete within three weeks max. No one will be able to dump tires on the property, and the county's funds will not be used to clean up any tires on the property. All I ask is that you please give us until September twenty-seventh. The nuisance order will not be needed after the twenty-seventh of this month. Thank you for your time and patience, Kevin. And that was from Kevin at Green Developers from this morning. So you have in front of you the nuisance order that has an abatement date of December first. I have this email from Kevin asking until the end of the month before we enter the nuisance order. It is up to you as a board at this point, if you want to enter that nuisance order today. What it does require if we do that is it starts the process within District Court, um, which we can do if that's what your choice is, or if you would like to wait until your October sixth meeting, which would be the Tuesday after the twenty-seventh. If nothing has been done, we can enter the order at that point, but the choice is yours.
Mister, if you, if we issue the order, um, you know, declaring nuisance.
Right.
You, as the attorney, still have to go file it in District Court.
Correct.
So it means that you would have some discretion as to when you file it.
And potentially, I'm not certain if, I don't think, but I am not certain if there is any time constraints between when it is signed here and when it's filed in District Court.
Well, that would be stated in our regulations, right?
It's, it's actually under the nuisance statutes, which I'll look at here really quick and let you know. Um, but I don't think, so yes, we could have discretion. So if it's not done by the twenty-seventh, we could file it at District Court on the twenty-eighth, if you'd prefer.
Well, I, so I want to, I want to take care of this now. I mean, it's nice that he's asking us, but I don't, you know.
I, I don't think that there's an issue with that. I think if this, if, as a board, you want to enter the nuisance order now, you can do that, and we can wait in our office until the twenty-eighth to file it in District Court. I'll verify a statute as soon as we're done here to make sure.
Well, we'll be back here in two weeks.
That's.
And um, at that point, we will know whether anything is moved there. I mean, whether more tires have shown up or any trucks and loaders have shown up to take them away, right?
True. What I don't know, he didn't give me any other details on the plans, like if they have a huge amount of people coming and when they're scheduled, so I don't know. I don't know if there's backend planning that we would know before our mid-September meeting. I don't know if we would see movement or not. I can send him an email back.
Jennifer, did we put the cameras up?
We did not yet put the cameras up. We have the sign up, but we did not yet put the cameras up.
We have no idea who dumped something this past weekend.
Don't. We had information from the landowner that reported it, that he had pictures. I don't believe we have seen those yet to know if there were pictures of license plates or some type of identifying information. I don't think that Gary in planning had gotten those from the landowner. He'd requested them, but I don't know that he had received them. Okay.
Well, I would like to go forward and issue the order, a little bit of firework and all. I even helped.
Yeah, but then issue the order and with the idea that it wasn't, it wouldn't be put before this, the court until the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I, I don't even think we would have to decide right now when we file, but I want to issue the order. You know, it would, it would depend on what they do or don't do when we file. You know, that's a conversation we can have in two weeks.
Now, I'm good with that as long as we do give it an opportunity, say if anything's done or anything's done by the twenty-seventh.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, they start, like if they're loading them and hauling them out of there, it wouldn't even bother me if they're not all gone by the time, but if they're, if nothing happens, you know, they're just playing with us.
I know.
And, you know, that guy, he, he, he knows how to fool around and send letters, send emails back and forth. He's, he's gonna sleep just fine tonight whether we issue the order or not. It's not gonna bother him at all.
Well, and I will tell you, Kevin from Green Developers, since that email that I missed that we, I got after the meeting has been in contact and has indicated that he is taking steps and moving towards doing all of those things, which is far more than we ever got from Mr. Victor James. Um, so that communication, I think, is good, and, and I agree. I think if you want to sign it today, and we hold off on filing anything in District Court until the end of the month or whenever they've started doing things, whenever later this board determines, I don't think that there's an issue with that at all.
Maybe we can cite the dude for trespassing, you know, shows up on Green, Victor, if he shows up on Green Developers.
They would love that, I think, is the indication that I've had, is they, Green Developers, if he could be found and cited for trespass, but if he's dumping any additional tires, they would have an issue with that.
All right, so I entertain a motion for item twenty-eight, please. I move that we approve the order declaring nuisance for the real property owned by Green Developers LLC, a New York limited liability company located at tracks thirty-three A and thirty-four A of Phase Three of Medicine Bow Ranch subdivision. Move it second. Any further discussion? Here it's seeing, not always the favorite six, probably saying hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi, I'll close it. Thanks a lot, Kevin, for the follow-up on all of that. Uh, twenty-nine present for approval application for catering for Snowy Range Resorts Incorporated Business Albany Lodge for private party at the Buckeye Ranch, five-six-three Wyoming eleven, February, Wyoming, on September ninth, twenty-twenty-two, from four to eight P M. Share that tomorrow.
Sure, so this is an application for catering permit, just as you.
Any questions? I entertain a motion for twenty-nine, please. Second. Move it second. Any further discussion? Here it's seeing, not always the favorite six, probably saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi. I'll close it. Motion carries. I have thirty-eight present for approval application for catering, Snowy Range Resorts Incorporated Business Albany Lodge for private party at Deerwood Ranch, Wellington Events, five-ninety-nine West, for Wyoming eleven, February, Wyoming, on September seventeen, twenty-twenty-two, from five, the end of twelve A M.
Another one.
Any questions, commissioners? I entertain a motion for item thirty, Dan, please. I move that we approve item thirty, yes, percentage.
Second.
Move it second. Any further discussion? Here it's seeing, not always the favorite six, probably saying hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi, I'll close it. That motion carries. I have thirty-eight, Homeland Security Extension, Bailey, please.
So, like I said earlier, um, I mean, I ain't giving this agreement till Friday, um, but Sheriff Applehorns has had issues with a contractor if you're going to the second portion of the original funding for security cameras. So we, I made a call to the Homeland Security Office, and instead of extending because we were at the deadline, um, they are reallocating into a one-to-one agreement, a whole different grant, a new grant ID number, everything in this system fat, um, to finish off that project.
Mister, is any question? Basically, there'll be a whole new contract as well.
Yeah, there's a whole new contract with a different, um, grant ID number. Um, they said it was the easiest way to do it on their end, um, just because we didn't know until later, so we couldn't extend it. Our current one. Um, I've talked with Sheriff Applehorns about what the deadline um should be, and um we told them the end of the calendar year, and they extended a few months after that. Um, so we have, should have sufficient time to get the project.
Okay. And will that be coming before us, or is that, are we to vote on it today?
Uh, I just need the agreement taken care of today, and then.
The quote's under twenty-five thousand dollars, so, um, and we've gotten multiple quotes, so we're just gonna go with the multiple quote requirement for our budgeting purposes to fulfill the grant. So they're gonna be ready to go here in the next couple of weeks.
The project is for the security cameras in the north entry. Um, the other piece of the original grant was the X-ray machine, which the X-ray machine has been purchased, and everything's taken care of on that one. It was just the security camera.
So is this with the same contractor?
Yeah.
They just could.
So there's a different contractor between the X-ray machine and the uh security cameras.
Gotcha. What was the reason that the contractor gave for not being able to complete the project at the time?
They literally just kind of fell off the face of the earth for about four weeks. We weren't able to get uh the bid from them. They forgot to send us the bid, and that they're not able to order in all of the equipment uh by our deadline. So we were slated to forget, uh, try and forget, uh, begin production. Let's see, August fourth, I believe, um, and so we didn't hear back from them until August twenty-second on there as well. That's what they said it was gonna do, is to get, get the cameras in, to get out. And it did, the north-east camera replaced, and then the other six cameras within the north entrance installed and ready to go on our switches.
Got it. Is there anything else? I entertain a motion for thirty-A agreements for public security, or security cameras.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item thirty-A, um, the agreement as presented for, with Homeland Security for, um, security cameras of course.
Move it second. Any further discussion? Here it's seeing, not always the favorite six, probably saying hi.
Hi.
Hi, I'll close it. That motion carries. Thank you, Bailey. Thank you, Sheriff, uh, for moving that along. I have thirty-one, approved vouchers for August twenty-twenty-two. I didn't pay a motion for that.
I move that we approve vouchers for August twenty-twenty-two.
Second. Move it second. Is, all's the favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi. Hi, I'll close it. Carrie is, I am thirty-two, saying no more business before the county finishes off September sixth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, call this meeting adjourned. Uh, have a great afternoon. Thanks for joining us, and we'll see you in two weeks. Have a nice day.